Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 5th Town Council Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We were way out of sync.
Yeah, we need some practice.
Counselor Nazaro and Counselor Wright are excused tonight. They have engagements. We will begin tonight's meeting with public forum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Allen.
Your favor, right?
Come on out.
Mr. Allen, moody point. One issue of real high emphasis, and you have the perfect paid administrator for the job at hand, and with the knowledge and the capability and the captain of the ship, would you ask him to look into how Durham has gotten so much of their solar power through that particular company is doing the financing and not costing them to add more power to our grid down here and to go ahead and start applying for some of the grants that are available, especially in hydroelectric, solar power for our town, for adding more electricity to the grid because we're marked as a number red one zone in the seacoast to try to do something with for power. I mean, it's what you could do is look at your bill, I don't know about anybody else, but $109 to $800 in one month, same amount of power, actually a little less than last year. We have an electricity problem. What company would come to this town with the highest, literally in this county, the highest price in the nation for electricity? That would be a potential getting any which way we can get electricity into the downtown area would be essentially to doing expansion to the North Main and the parts that the our engineers did, they need electricity, but they need reasonable, cheap energy at the right times. The Northern Pass is not going to be bringing in any power to us, it's going south of us. We're not going to be buying off their PSN's lines. So, opportunity knocks, grab it. I'm assuming on the pedestrian bridge, there'll be a public for the pedestrian bridge to be able to speak at that time for that?
Yes. Right after, right after this.
Right.
If you'd like, you can roll it right in because if you'd like to speak to the pedestrian bridge.
I'm in agreement with Section 3. I read the pages of the 642 pages of that engineering report. Other than we lose one parking space, we have awful parking space problem down there. I'm still, I see the engineer still did not talk about one-waying traffic down there and picking up spaces, but that would probably be much better when the town became its own, turn that town into its own district, it takes over the downtown for the plowing, and you can do what you want with the downtown district without the state being in it, which has brought some other problems with other state projects up the street. The state of New Hampshire was up to the Sitco gas station, threatening him and domain on the gas station on the Rockingham Getty at there, they want to take the whole front of his gas station up to his back door. Basically, he doesn't give them to it for $500, they'll take the place from him. I do not like the hide-nose tactics that the state is taking on one-way. That's not the only place they did it. They did it to the farmer down the street, he hired attorneys. This project was quoted in $750,000. It's the costing us nothing, it's costing us a lot. It's costing the people who can't even speak up and vote yet pay taxes here as property owners, and you're having stuff taken away from them. So, somebody needs to speak for them. Same thing's happening in Joey Cruzick's down, they're going after his area without proper I say we hold them in place. They threw down our throat, changing the sewer that works just fine right this second. It's the way they're going at us, they go at us that way. We need to cut our ties in the downtown area where we want to build from them and go to more that urban pack type routine away from their hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to either the bridge or the, the bridge, excuse me, the downtown traffic calming or anything else? Seeing none, public comment is over at 7:07. Next on the agenda, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the February 19th, 2014 meeting?
So moved.
Second by Counselor Bentley. Any amendments, questions with respect to the minutes? Anyone? Please call the roll.
Counselor Pickering.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael.
Aye.
Counselor Bentley.
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next, we have the report from the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a first reminder that on Tuesday, March 11th, is election day. I probably saw the sign somewhere. We will need town councilors to attend the closing to assist with the counting of the ballots. Those councilors who are candidates cannot count the ballots that they are on, so you could assist with the school, but you can't touch the town ones. Second, we are anticipating a high voter turnout due to issues on the ballot. Chief of Police, Director of Public Works, and I have met about parking during the polling hours. We're going to be limiting parking in front of Town Hall to 30 minutes so voters can come in and out and leave. We're also going to be doing that temporarily on Main Street from St. Mary's to Beach Street, limiting that to 30 minutes as well. In fact, with Town Clerk Tax Collector and School District Clerk, there's also concerns with the closing of the polls on Tuesday. We're anticipating a large and passionate groups of individuals waiting for election results, but we want to get the information out as quickly as possible. Distractions from non-election officials can hinder the release of the figures. We are meeting with the chief, the clerks, and the moderators to determine how we can make and show the information distributed timely while allowing the election officials to do their job. One proposal that what we'll be doing is we'll be broadcasting live that evening the reading of the results. So, if, to encourage people, they can watch the results on TV live, and we'll be doing the reading here in this room versus downstairs. So, you can get the number of people up here and let the election workers work down there. People who want to watch the counting still has the right, have the right to watch the counting, but we thought that by moving, one proposal, by moving the people up here to hear the results, it'll separate that. So, we don't have to worry about, we can get the work, the job done and get the results to the people who need it. And we're just going to be meeting on Friday to discuss that with the other moderators.
So, the, just real quick, the results are going to be read up here?
Up here, as soon as we get them. Unofficial results will be read. That's a proposal right now.
So, normally, just to put it in perspective, because it's going to probably be quite a few people.
Yep.
Normally, people sort of pack the basement area.
Right.
And then they read them.
Right.
So, now you're going to try to move all those people up here?
Move those who are going to just there for the results up here to listen to it. Or they can go, they can watch it live at home. We're also going to send out an email to the news blast at the same point in time as well as put it on the website. So, all those places will get it at the same time.
Well, just, okay, just in the event, just, won't affect me all that much because I can't count regarding the ballots. Maybe I can't count otherwise. But anyway, if this room has too many people, just for the sake of argument, if there's too many people here, and we have a large quantity, I'm thinking more from logistics.
Yeah.
Would you want to set a TV up downstairs or away for people? I'm just trying to think.
That's what we're going to work on. Those are the kind of logistics, but because of the fact that the auditorium is filled with the election, the booths and the tables and the ballots, it does not have the normal size to, it doesn't have the right capacity to hold the number of people. So, the second largest room in this building is this room.
Okay.
So.
I'll let you figure it out.
Yeah.
Did I hear you say, Mr. Administrator, that they could stay and watch the counting process if they still want it?
Right, you have the right to observe the counting of the ballots. After, after we do the unofficial ticket ones, they still have to go through the process of counting the ballots of, and make sure the numbers that are coming in are correct as the council gets involved with. The public has a right to watch that. So, there'll be a roped-off area where you could stand there and watch it. It's not, as you know, by doing it, it's not the most exciting thing in the world.
That was going to be my only input. They're still allowed to be in here, coming up here, I guess, doesn't mean.
Yeah.
I hope we delineate with the ropes and just maybe enforce, because even last year, which wasn't even a big controversial, close, there were some people like right in the edge and asking and trying to walk behind and it.
And that's why we're.
By then, though, by then, I think the results have all been.
That's why we're trying to separate the two and have the reading of the results up here, so you don't have that people getting involved saying, what number was that, or that kind of information. We're going to separate the two.
No, but I, I'm sorry, I meant even during the counting, you know.
That's what I meant, yeah.
There's a lot, you know, I did it three years, a lot of them here now, and it's distracting when there's now, you know, last year there might have been 20 people, and now there might be 50 in there.
Right.
All I'm saying is maybe we put the rope back farther.
Yeah.
Let the people here count and not have.
What we're hoping is that a majority of the people are here just for the results, and they'll leave as soon as they hear the results announced up here. And they, you know, while they have the right to go down, we, we don't think there'd be many people who'd be interested, so. One thing I've been reviewing has been the hours of operation in the various offices at Town, at Town Hall. Since I've been in Newmarket, there's been a lot of confusion on the hours of operations. Most customers come into Town Office, assume that we're on the same schedule as Town Clerk Tax Collector, and we're not open on Fridays. It creates confusion when they're not, when they're not, when we are not here later in the day and when people believes that, we are here when people believe we're closed. I'm going to, with that in mind, I'm going to look into trying out new office hours during the summer months. I'm going to look at some of other communities do and determine what will work best for Newmarket. We would still be open five days a week, but it may be a limited schedule one day and longer hours on the other days to let people be able to come in here. One thing we heard within, with the Friday situation is people still want to get building permits on Fridays, and would probably do that in the morning when the building inspector is still here. But it's something we want to look at to expand the hours so people can get here after work a little bit more versus time when they don't think we're here. One thing you could take into consideration is that the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office sets their own hours. So, this would be, try to work along with them at the same time. But it's still preliminary, and I'll get the, come up with a proposal shortly. We began working with PSNH to conduct lighting and energy audits at Town Hall and other municipal buildings. They've sent individuals to review our current lighting systems and determine if there are any potential areas to improve, improvements for savings. They will then make recommendations, provide assistance in financing the projects. I'll have more information in the near future. They have been through this building, I believe, other ones reviewing the lighting structures at this point. The next thing will be other energy audits to see what they can, what recommendations they may have. But they also provide financing on their end that, because they've got grants from the PUC that would assist in paying these things, so we're going to be working with them. And finally, I forgot to put in my written report, but there was a report released from the city of Dover, Dover's Rochester and Portsmouth last week on the peer review for the nitrogen levels in the Great Bay estuaries that the Coalition communities. There were some questions on how does that impact us and our permit, because the review brought up some questions on the figures and the methodologies that they, they brought up, that EPA used. This is very preliminary. I could tell you right now, the city of Dover is releasing that to their council at this moment. And I talked to the attorney, our attorney, and it basically, the situation we're in is, first of all, everybody already has a permit. They've lost all their appeals. That happened in December when they, they lost that final appeal from the EPA. What we could do, though, is when new information has been gathered, if something changes, we'd have the right to reopen our permit. So, to say if the, if the nitrogen level does not need to get down from the eight to the three, and it's proven by this report or some other information, we can request that our permit be reopened to modify it. And that, so that would be the information that we can get from there. It's going to be difficult to argue with, with the EPA to prove that, but that's what the Coalition community is going to be doing, so we'd just be reviewing, receiving the benefits there. We never objected to the filing of the peer review for this reason exactly, because we didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that if there was new information out there, we'd still be able to benefit from that. So, you'll be seeing things in the paper about this coming up. It'll be a lot of passionate opinions from other, from the other communities, because they have not gone as far as we have. But if the, if it comes to fruition and the science is proven, then we would ask for a modification of our own permit, so we wouldn't have to get to those levels. And we, remember, we have to, at this point, get to the eight, and then at the eight, we have the right to review to get, to see where we are, to, then if we have to go down further, it would be determined at that time. And off the top of my head, it's 2017, so we have some, we have some time to do so. And it's on December 31st of that year. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Any question? Counselor Carmichael.
So, these Coalition towns are still fighting this, they're still paying for the freight, right?
Yep.
Which we're not.
That's correct.
When we balled out last year.
Yep.
Okay. So, actually, we're in a good position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have two quick questions.
Yep.
With respect to the lights, I'm assuming they're going to look at the option of putting LEDs wherever possible?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the other question I have is with respect to the Coalition. If they change the other towns, I think it's Rochester, correct me if I'm wrong, Rochester, Dover, and Portsmouth?
Yep, the cities, yep.
If they end up giving them a lower number.
Yep.
Or, excuse me, a higher number for the permit, so I'm just using a number, eight or 10 or whatever. We signed for an eight, and then I think it was, we had up to 10 years, I thought it was into the 2020s to either do modification to non-point source or, meaning, meaning upgrade the non-point or evaluate whether the three would make a difference. So, I guess my question is, you know, we all have different situations. Portsmouth has a different situation than we do. We're right on the bay. Portsmouth is, is really, you know, more in the ocean, and, and then it comes into the bay, but it's a little bit different. Would, would they evaluate us completely independent of those other three towns?
They would, they, they would evaluate every community separately. So, even those three towns who are still in the Coalition, they're not getting identical permits, and they would still have to review the science for each of them and the impact that, that they're making on those, on the, on the bay. So, yes, everybody would be separate. But what they're doing is that you're getting the research that was done to say, look, we believe that this also is going to impact us. Let's try to, we believe we can use a higher number because the eel grass is coming back and the, the bay is getting healthier, and we've done a lot more non-point stuff to help solve this. So, we believe that the wastewater plant would not need to get to that level, so.
Okay, so despite the fact that we signed the permit, they would, or we have the right to, I don't think appeal is maybe the right word.
Right, ask for modification.
And, and they, they would be theoretically based on your conversation with the attorney, amenable to that?
Yeah, you'd have to, they'd review it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Pickering?
In reference to the energy audit, you mentioned other municipal buildings. Now, my assumption, the wastewater plant is one of our higher-usage buildings. Is that on your radar?
It is. It's actually, they're going to, I, I met with a representative from PSNH before I was out of the office, and they're going to discuss it. That one, we're going to get a little more into because of the fact of the construction.
Sure.
And they want to see what they can also do to help out, and they'll probably talk to the engineers that are in the design.
Let's see, there was something else that I could just remember. Thank you.
Sure. Next on the agenda. All right, everybody all set? Committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports to give us feedback on?
We're back to the, just so everybody knows, EDC won't be meeting until sometime toward the end of March, so, just for the record.
Oh, I know. I know.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, when you're finished, I just remembered.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Have, have you spoken to the SAU office about the energy audit and see if perhaps they could make the same phone call and?
They, they know about it. We actually had them, we had the, for this building, because we own 75% of the building, they own 25%.
Sure.
They did the whole building, and they know about it for the schools as well. It's a different program from the municipal buildings.
Yeah.
But they, they do know about it.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's it. Next on the agenda, do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2013-14-51, which is the purchase of a Ford F-250?
Motion to accept Resolution 2013/14-51, purchase of a 2015 Ford F-250 for $31,561 for the water sewer department.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Pike, second. Sean, do you want to just speak to it real, real quick, since this has been around for a while?
Okay.
Don't worry, we're going to support it, I just figured.
This is, um.
Since we've done it so long, you might as well just.
This is, um, this truck is replacing the 1996 Chevy with a utility body and plow. It's a 1996. It's worn out. The Auto Excellence has recommended to, that it's, just too much money is going to have to go into it, and it's not worth saving. And what we're replacing it with is, the council charged me to look for an alternative for different boxes, so we're getting a 2015 Ford with, and we're going to mount boxes on the side of the body for $31,000. It actually, the difference is about $5,000 versus the utility body.
What was the used one, Sean?
The used one was $18,900.
And that, did that include the, the, that was the one with like 100,000 miles or something?
Yeah, it had a utility body on it, yes.
So, at the end of the day, we saved about five off the original. It's a little bit smaller cab, I think, I recall reading, not, not, not by a lot, but we.
No, it, what it is, it's a smaller, the boxes are smaller, so the space is not as, there's not as much usable space.
But it gives you, the only thing I want to ask you, it gave you enough, and what about the plow? Was there a plow being added to it, or?
The plow is with, comes with it.
Oh, okay.
It's $31,000 for the plow and the boxes.
Good. Any other questions? Everybody good with it?
We asked last time, is it really a 2015?
It is a 2015. You cannot order any more 2014s. Actually, they've made their first run of, I think, about 6,000 2015s for state bids, because the state bids are a baseline model. It's not something you'd normally order, so if you want a baseline model, you could order one right now.
And these aren't the aluminum ones yet, then, or?
I don't believe, I don't believe it's an aluminum. I believe that was the, because this is a Super Duty, I believe the, yeah, 1500 aluminum, yes.
Counselor Carmichael.
Sean, it was A and B I saw in here, and you chose B, right? That was a lesser price?
Yes.
I just want to commend you and thank you for going with lower price, recommending that. It's nice to see that we don't have to go for the top all the time. Thank you.
Yeah, I too, I too thank you for this. I'm glad, you know, it took a little longer than I think you wanted, but I think at the end of the day, we, you know, saved a few thousand dollars. I don't think you feel like you compromised too much on the product, do you?
A new truck.
Are you happy with it?
Well, we're just going to have to strategically use the equipment, but we can get by with it.
Well, it was, it was a 13% savings for whatever it's worth, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you want to call the roll?
Counselor Pickering.
Aye.
Counselor Pike? Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, I mean, five zero.
You say it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2013/14-52, accepting a preferred alternative to the pedestrian bridge.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? I don't really have a question, I have more of a comment. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Sorry, Counselor Carmichael, I didn't see it. Go ahead. Okay. Could, could we have Diane come up again and just go over for the public, okay?
Okay.
And people at home that didn't see the last presentation, you may just, you know, shot and sweet the numbers that are going to happen here.
I might, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. I might like to ask Scott Boots here from DuBois King to join me up here, and we're also here with Mark Ambrosi. Mark is the Transportation Planner with the Regional Planning Commission, who helped out with the project, so I think between the three of us, we can probably give you a, a good overview. At our last meeting, we had an extensive presentation by DuBois King, kind of giving you an overview of all the different alternatives to the pedestrian bridge. There were five, actually six alternatives, and the engineering report has come forward with a recommendation for alternative 3A, which includes, I refer to them as traffic calming type measures that would be implemented within a section, I don't know how many blocks it is, I want to say four or five block area within the vicinity of the, the mills, and it will also include improved signage, the inclusion of some what they call bulboats, which is a new term that I've learned, which will help to define where the pedestrian areas are. And of course, there's recommendations for better lighting and the inclusion of some street tables.
Tabletops.
Tabletops to help slow down the traffic, because the concern is that the geometry as it is now is impaired because of sight distance problems, and I'm going to let Scott explain the more technical details. But the overall proposal is $263,000, if I'm not mistaken, which is within the budget that is available through our federal grant from the Federal Highway Administration. The alternative three includes a budget of $262,000. And we also reviewed some budget data at the last meeting, where the overall impact to the town, including the money that has been expended to date, as well as would be expended for the alternative three implementation, would be roughly $35,000, and the federal grant would be $280,000 roughly, and Mr. Chinberg would be putting in 10%, matching what the town share would be for the project. So, the overall project is certainly more modest than the pedestrian bridge scenario, is roughly about $350,000, so.
Let me go.
Yes.
Is that?
In that whole tax rate, you, we said something about having $50,000 that we still had.
Yes, this will not affect the current or the proposed tax rate, because these funds, there was about $55,000 that was set aside when the downtown TIF was shut down, what was that, two or three years ago at this point? So, those funds are available in an account waiting to be incurred for this project upon the approval of the Town Council.
Counselor Pickering.
Pike.
Will any of the proposed changes have any adverse impact on folks that have to plow the roads or their equipment?
We've taken some great consideration in speaking to the Public Works Department to make sure that the, the impacts will not affect their plowing procedure. We have made sure that any visual transitions with the crosswalks will be flush. The pavement width from curb to curb is not going to change. What will change is, is the inclusion of any tabletop raised sidewalk crossings, only if DOT will grant an urban compact zone within the downtown area. If not, the tabletops will be removed, and pavement markings, striping will be put in its place, but the other visuals that we spoke of, of stone or granite, again, will be flushed, so the plow trucks will run right over them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any problems?
Anyone else? Counselor Bentley?
No, Dale, go first, could I?
Counselor Pike?
Yeah, I just wanted to check, the, is sort of the next step to go to the, is legislative, then? The urban compact is sort of what has to happen before anything else, right?
Well, the next step is to work on legislative and design at the same time. As you all are aware, and as we had prepared and reported before, the safety lieu funding for this project ends September 30th, 2015. The next interim date deadline is having preliminary plans done and submitted to DOT along with the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA, by that time. So, to meet that deadline, we will be preparing plans, assuming that we can get urban compact, and trying to go after the legislator at the same time. If it appears that legislation is not going to be feasible, then we can down, down the scale of the project and take out those components.[1780.33] To me, it's a lot easier to eliminate than to add after the fact.
Good. Counselor Bentley?
Yeah, this is a question, it's probably a statement, Diane, this is my farewell tour, and you've had two tough, tough projects with the dam and the sky bridge, and I appreciate, you know, your focus and all the work you've put in, and you've always been professional in me, and I just wanna say something, I think the two projects that were kinda, took a long time and kind of forgotten, kinda like a counselor, but anyway, I wanna thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bentley, I appreciate that.
That's it.
Counselor Carmichael?
In a perfect world, when would the start?
Three years ago.
As far as the design or the construction?
The start, the starting date. I mean, you know, would it be a year from now?
No. The next step is, we're waiting for DOT to review and approve and provide the town a notice to proceed to sign an agreement with DuBois and King to start the design. Some of my other towns that have submitted their reports last Friday on February 28th, I've already received some of those notices for those other towns. I anticipate very shortly we'll be receiving that notice from DOT for Newmarket. So once that notice is done, then we will be preparing a scope and going through the IG process and moving as quickly as possible, as soon as possible.
So we'll probably be back here in April with the resolution to get the appropriations of funds and get all those things in order so we can...
And as this goes on, well, are we notified, or is the town administrator and yourself, how's that work, as far as the project starting and how the stages are going?
I think periodically throughout the process, we'll be having Scott come in and give you an update at different decision points along the way. Probably after we do the design engineering, we'll be coming in for a presentation before we go out to bid and get that, make sure that everybody understands that process and is comfortable with that, and probably before construction starts, and there will be more opportunity for communication back and forth and for public input in that process.
The next phase consists of, actually, there's two more phases, the design and the construction. During the design, there's preliminary submission to DOT, the NEPA documentation, and then final design before we go out to bid. So obviously during final, during preliminary submission and final, we have no problems coming back and making our interim presentation to what the status is and how the project is proceeding accordingly.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick ones for me. I'm assuming this resolution does not limit us for adding on to the budget that you've set so far, which is around $260,000.
It's a cost estimate at this point.
Okay.
Before any funds are obligated, we will have to come back to the council with a resolution asking for an appropriation of funds in order to make those funds available and so that we can move forward with the bidding process.
The reason I'm asking is, and I, I think we're gonna need some feedback from the urban compact and some other things, but if there's an opportunity to look at those barriers where we were talking about that could be removed, it was fairly inexpensive, and it might provide more safety in a couple of areas, you know, Council Pike mentioned the area to the south, which I don't know if it would make sense there, I just don't know, as the cars come up the hill near where Floraventures is. I do know coming down the hill on the north end, that's where a lot of people cut over, and that's where the line of sight is really difficult when people are coming from the north, actually both ways, but more coming down the hill, you know, toward town, from north going south. So I think you said that was somewhere around $5,000, I didn't really, or maybe it was your partner, was that per or for the whole kit and caboodle?
I think it was for the whole kit and caboodle, but during the preliminary design, we can definitely look at that. The study just globally on a general scale looks at the different alternatives. Now that a preferred alternative has been decided, the preliminary design will look at that one alternative a little bit more detailed, looking at the ballers we've discussed. I do know town administrator has made a recommendation to install lights at the crosswalks that are flush. We have spoken to a vendor at that time that we have worked close with.
Is that on the ground?
That is at the ground.
Yeah, I asked last time about that, but, so that's been talked about subsequent?
That has been talked about. We're starting to get some mixed emotions. I know the city of Nashville has just recently installed them, but we're starting to hear some feedback from the vendors that other New England towns are removing them because of maintenance issues and the...
Clear or something coming up?
The salt and the water is really just making them unstable and not dependable. So, of course, that's one vendor. During preliminary design, we'll talk to multiple, provide that to the town, and let you guys decide what, if it's important enough to install it or not. But those two aspects and some other aspects, we will be looking at during preliminary design.
So just briefly, 'cause I think we'll get the urban compact, I can't imagine them not wanting us to have more safety in that area, but in the event that we don't, or with the timeline, how, how would that affect the rest of the project? Are there things that you would, is, 'cause my understanding when you were here last time was, it would pretty much be the same regardless. It's just that I think the chief and your gentleman that was with you felt it would obviously be safer by lowering the speed limit. Is there a significant change in the, in the design if we don't get that designation?
The basis and the intent will stay the same, but there's specific features that would not be included. First example is, by having the urban compact, the town has then taken maintenance responsibility. So our coordination would be more with the town than with DOT. Obviously, with DOT maintaining it, they would prefer not to have the raised tabletops. They would love to have their pavement just be flush, so that would be a feature removed.
So just, 'cause this is the first time I've heard of this, meaning that it would be our, you know, our responsibility. So if they were plowing, for example?
Yeah.
And the state was coming through doing 108?
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying when they got to our area, they would just stop?
Of the urban compact, they'd lift their plows up. They would plow from Durham to Newmarket, got to the urban compact, the plows would come up, go through it.
But on the flip side, we are already plowing it as well, because of the fact that the state would come by in less frequently than what we need in a downtown area, we do it.
So Rick is fine with, the point is, he's not gonna go, oh, I got all this extra stuff.
We're already doing a better job.
Okay, okay. All right, just asking.
That's a fair question.
And what do you think the, do you feel the timeline, whether it's DOT, legislature, combination of both, or whatever, can that be done fairly expeditiously?
The timeline with regards to...
To get the urban designation?
I do not know at this time, sir.
Okay, that would be good to know.
We definitely, once a notice proceed has been granted by DOT to move on to the design, the first thing we need to do is start communications with DOT and see if we can't get some support from both district, Concord, and the commissioner to help shepherd this along, so that if we get that support from them, then we can proceed our design accordingly, knowing that this is coming down the pike and it's really up to legislation.
Okay, so that's something you can work on.
And I'll talk to the delegation to introduce a bill or whatever we need for legislation.
And we can send maybe a letter from the council requesting this?
Yeah.
And so if it moved as quickly as possible, this, September you said is roughly the deadline, could this be implemented by the end of this year or early next year, in a best case scenario? Just to give us an idea.
I think the best case scenario is, if everything worked well, we could probably have the project out to bid by fall.
Fall of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
My recommendation would be to wait till February of next year. Contractors typically only work in a one season cycle, so anyone who is already busy and have enough work, they're just concerned about closing of projects of that season, so you're not gonna have enough interest. You may, you may not. Now, granted, with that stated, when the project is done, we can't go out to bid till DOT tells us to. They may tell us to go out in September, October, and we will ask and request to go in February for better pricing, but our hands are tied at that time. But we will be, always be working to, as, to move the project along expeditiously as possible.
And the only other, oh, Counselor Carmichael? The only other thing I would say is, I think this is a really nice compromise, and I hope, you know, I think it's really potentially better for the town. I think it's gonna affect more people than the other alternative, as much as people were invested in the bridge, and thank you for the work, so. And that's it.
Thank you.
Very good.
Vote to vote?
Callable.
Counselor Pickering?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
We have several motions laid on the table, just to state it publicly, the adoption of the administrative code, we're waiting for the charter. Harvest Way, we're still waiting, is there any headway there? Do we get any...
Still doing some research.
Okay, started out.
Yeah.
And we have two resolutions tonight to read for first reading, which, let's see, the first one is on page 44. It's resolution 2013-14-53. It's authorizing the town administrator to sign a municipal sidewalk agreement with the state of New Hampshire Department of Transportation for the Route 108 widening project, whereas the state of New Hampshire is widening Route 108 in the town of New Market from Bay Road to Stagecoach Road in 2015-16 at no cost to the town end, whereas part of the project will be the construction of sidewalks along Route 108 in this area, and whereas it is the state's policy not to plow or perform winter maintenance on the proposed sidewalks end, whereas the town of New Market sees the benefit for increasing sidewalks in this area for pedestrian safety. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the New Market Town Council that it authorizes the town administrator to execute a municipal sidewalk agreement between the town of New Market and the state of New Hampshire Department of Transportation for Route 108. And the only other resolution we have, would you like to read, Counselor Vice Chair Bentley? It's on 45.
All right, okay.
Not your final hurrah, but at least...
Can we speak of that last one, or we do not even speak of that? It's just the first reading.
First reading.
If you wanna...
I'll come as a citizen and speak on it.
Why don't, why don't you bring up, if you have a question about it, bring it up, because at least the, he doesn't have to answer.
I just thought the first sign, the opening statement, at no cost to the town. I mean, they're widening, and they're not charging us for the, but the whole sewer thing is, I know it's nothing that anyone in this building did, but it's, that's what's wrong with every level of government.
Is that something that we can potentially talk about or negotiate with them? If it costs the town significant money to do, you know, deal with a sewer movement or whatever?
The way, it's gonna be very difficult. The way that it's determined is, what's the value of the utilities that are underground, and it's a, basically a sliding scale, say if we put them in last year, then they would assist us a percentage to replace them. Those lines have been in there so long that they're not gonna assist us. We're just, we were already scheduled to replace these things. We actually, we wanted to do it before they got in there, but now that they're coming in with their project, we're just scheduling at the same time, so we're not double, we're not double digging.
We're moving it, though.
We are moving some, yeah.
So there's extra digs. Before you would dig up, put a new one right in, now we're digging up...
We are moving some, right.
And re-digging and moving, so that's...
This may be nuts, but I'll ask it anyway, and something you can just think about. I offered this latitude for, Ms. Counsel Bentley's last meeting to be active in. I'm sure the answer is no, but is that $700,000, you know, for the other project, which is, you know, upgrading the entire corridor, so to speak, of, could that possibly be requested to see if we, since we're not spending anywhere near that total amount?
No.
So worth a try?
No, because one is for transportation enhancement for pedestrians, and one is for...
Enhancement for people riding their bikes?
No, it doesn't...
Okay.
Sounds good.
I don't know.
So I was saying no so quick, but, and it's two different projects. This is their project, the 108 widening. The other one is our project, so the money can't be...
All right, I'll roll it out. Thanks for asking, Chair. Town of New Market enhanced by the New Market Town Council, resolution 2013/2014-54, a resolution relating to the purchase of 2013 John Deere 410K loader backhoe for the Department of Public Works, whereas the Department of Public Works seeks to replace the current 2003 John Deere loader backhoe with a new 2013 John Deere 410K loader backhoe, and whereas the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of $610,509 as of December 31st, 2013, and whereas the total cost of the vehicle and related equipment is $93,500, which is in accordance to the state bid price. Now therefore, it be, now therefore be it resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby approve the purchase of a 2013 John Deere 410K loader backhoe at a price not to exceed $93,500. Authorize the town administrator to execute any related agreements and approve the withdrawal of funds from the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund.
See, if I had been more thoughtful, I would have read the one that expended 93 green, and I would have given you the one that was free, so that wasn't intentional. Anyway, other than that, which is not gonna be acted on tonight, is there any correspondence or statements by, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Carmichael?
Yeah, on the last one, that's the first reading, we haven't discussed this at all, right?
No.
So...
That information will be in the packet.
That will be in the packet.
Yeah, 'cause it was requested that we don't put all the backup information the first one, but we do it for the second one.
Okay. But we will have it.
Oh, absolutely.
So we can discuss it, and that's...
Yep, that's what the second reading's for.
Okay.
Thank you. Any comments by counselors? Maybe the shortest meeting in history, then I would accept a motion.
Just...
Oh, Counselor Pickering?
Just have a question about safety. I'm wondering if there's any possible way we can close the downtown area off from vehicular traffic when the town's down there removing snow, reroute the traffic, perhaps to prevent another accident?
That's something I think we'd look at, especially if we have a significant amount of it. I've thought, I've actually thought the same thing. I know they did, they shut it down between certain, you can't shut it down completely so people can get there, but you can limit it. I know they did it during the construction.
Yeah.
You moved them, detoured them around. I'll talk to Public Works and the police, see what we can do.
Before we adjourn, the only thing I was gonna say is, this is Counsel Bentley's last meeting, is an official member. We'll save the goodbyes for our next meeting, but I just wanted to...
Did he bring us a cake tonight?
I think we, I think we probably owe him something.
I can't have cake.
But anyway, I just wanted to thank him for all he's done, and that'll be to be continued at our next meeting.
March 17th, Monday night at 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
St. Patrick? Oh, we won't be having cake. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Wow.